Michael Rathers, Julia Township.
Here.
Scott Lager, Homer Township. Tim Mitchell, Shanahan Township. Barbara Peterson, Washington Township is here. Hugh Stiften, Frankfurt Township. Thomas White, Troy Township. Chairman Blenzel-Low, Manhattan Township. Mr. Chairman, cases heard this evening will advance to the Land Use Committee meeting, this county boardroom, 9:30 a.m. on May 12th. Variance cases will be heard to a conclusion this evening with the exception of case 6219. That is a variance for wireless communication facility which does advance to the Land Use Committee and also the county board.
I'm going to swear everyone who's speaking here tonight en masse, so please repeat after me. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be good. The first case tonight, oh yeah, right. We have two zoning cases tonight that will be continued to June the 2nd. First case is 6220-MSV. So anyone who was here for that case as an objector or concerned citizen, you can leave now and you'll have to come back on June the 2nd. Second case to be continued is 6232-SV, LeBrock Property Holdings, and that will be continued to June 2nd also. The first case tonight will be heard, will be given to us by Mr. Michael Smantana from the Golden Division.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to approve the minutes from last month?
Yes, I should. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smantana. Second.
Motion, second in all in favor.
Do we need anything on the two table pages?
Yeah, I'm sitting in that right now.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Stiften. Good evening, members of the commission. This first case takes place in Wilton Township. Appicent is requesting a variance for wireless telecommunication facility, maximum height from 200 feet to 254 feet. The 200-foot maximum telecommunication facility height is established by the State Statute. Appicent is requesting this variance to allow for a 254-foot cell tower to be constructed on a parcel. The cell tower being proposed is at least partially funded by the Rural Utilities Service of the United States Department of Agriculture under the broadband initiatives program. So the intent of the wireless telecommunication facility is to provide wireless internet access to this rural area. We have three photos displayed for you. Picture in the upper left-hand corner is looking southwest across the property. Picture in the bottom left-hand corner is looking east from the subject property, and the picture in the upper right-hand corner is looking northwest from the subject property. We have an aerial view, properties identified by the red arrow. The cell tower is supposedly constructed on part of a 40-acre parcel that is located in the southeast corner of Walsh and Bar Road. This is approximately two miles southwest of Wilton Center. We have the zoning map displayed for you. The green indicates A1. The nearest residential zoning district is a half mile from this location. Staff is recommending approval of a variance for wireless telecommunication facility, maximum height from 200 feet to 254 feet. And that concludes staff's analysis.
Any other questions to staff?
Michael, are you going to address local subdivision with its standards?
We can't now drive to the Appicent.
Would the applicant care to come down?
I'm Neil Piggash with Piggash Engineering, the agent representing the Appicent Convergence Technologies Incorporated, as well as the owners suing down Newt for this application for the waiver of the subdivision requirements for access from public road. One of the requirements of the grant program that this project is funded under is that they are required to purchase the land rather than lease. We would prefer to be able to lease it, but unfortunately, the USDA does not allow that as it has to be a capital expenditure. So we are requesting waiver of the subdivision requirements.
What Mr. Piggash is referring to is the second motion that will be considered after we consider the variance for maximum tower height.
I'm sorry, sorry about that.
So right now, let's focus on the variance for maximum tower height, then the next case will be the subdivision waiver, the subdivision ordinance.
Anyone have any questions? Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case? Thank you, sir. I'm going to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, case number 6219-DSV, approving a variance for wireless telecommunication facility, maximum height from 200 feet to 254 feet.
Okay, may I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Next case? Are you going to do that right away, ma'am?
Yes, I'd like to consider the major subdivision. Major subdivision waiver under consideration is from section 22-04-A for the Will County subdivision ordinance. That section of the subdivision ordinance requires that all lots front on or above a public or private street. As part of the wireless telecommunication facility proposal, the Appicent has proposed creation of a new parcel that will be landlocked, that will not have frontage on a public road. Access will be provided to the new parcel via easement. Because the parcel will not have frontage on a public road, this major subdivision waiver is required in accordance with the subdivision ordinance. I would ask that the commission vote on this major waiver, and note that the major waiver must move forward to the county board for final approval.
Michael, when there's an easement allocated out there, who owns the easement?
Well, the land itself is still owned by the property owner, but the easement will grant Convergence Technologies legal access across their land so that they can maintain and work on this cell tower.
So the tenant still owns the easement property?
Right, but the easement grants legal access to Convergence Technologies. You're welcome.
We heard from you on the same subject. Would you care to repeat, or you just want us to take a vote? But you perhaps require.
If anyone has any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I think I've addressed the request.
Anyone need to come down with a question? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the major subdivision waiver for the broken-out subdivision.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same side? Next case will be handled by Natalie Wood.
Zoning case 6226-MV takes place in Plainfield Township. The applicant is requesting a map amendment from A1 to R1, as well as a variance for maximum accessory building area from 1,800 square feet to 2,025 square feet. The purpose of this request is to bring the property into compliance and to instruct an accessory building using an existing concrete slab on the property. Displayed are four photos. The first is of the existing single-family home, and the second is of the existing concrete slab in the back of the property. Photos two and three are a viewpoint along West Old Remrick Road where the property is located. These pictures show that the property is within a single-family residence subdivision. Displayed is an aerial view. Highlighted in red is the subject property. As you can see, it's located to the south of West Old Remrick Road. To the north and to the east are single-family residences, and to the west and south are vacant parcels. The following is the zoning map of the subject property, highlighted in red. Green indicates A1 zoning, which is what the subject property is currently zoned as, and yellow is R3. To the west is Joliet Incorporated Parcels, and to the south is vacant A1 property. Displayed is a plot of survey of the subject property. Highlighted in red is the concrete slab in the rear of the property, which the applicant has proposed using for an accessory storage building. Staff recommends approval of a map amendment from A1 to R1, as well as approval of a variance for maximum accessory building area from 1,800 square feet to 2,025 square feet. That concludes staff's analysis.
Would Mr. Madam lead, care to come down?
Good evening. My name is Michael Mattingly. I'm an attorney at the office of Michael Mattingly. It's my pleasure to represent Mr. Tim and Mrs. Thea, nephew, who are the owners in the land trust, or a family trust that they own the property where they live on Old Remrick Road. We're the night before the commission to make two requests, this was stated by staff. The first is a map amendment, zoning map amendment request, to take a approximately two-acre parcel property from agriculture to R1 zoning under Will County's code. The nephews are the third generation of their family who were living in that area of the farm, and have seen the farm change from what was a largely rural agricultural area to what is now predominantly an urbanized area. When they went to go to the Will County Land Use Department to get a permit to build this accessory use shed so they can store some things like mowers and antique automobile and a few things that they own in a shed, they learned that their lot, which is now two acres in agricultural zone, is no longer a conforming lot to the standards, and that's in part why we're here this evening, to request that we get to a zoning that is in conformity with the Will County ordinance, and R1 will be a zoning classification that will satisfy that need. The second part was, they said they were going to build an accessory storage building, and the plan that they had for the accessory storage building is approximately with their garage and another small shed they had on the building. We put the building about 400 feet over the requirements in an R1 district for total accessory storage area. And that's why there's the request for the variance from the ordinance to build from the 1,800 square feet to the 2,025 square feet. And that would be consistent with the concrete slab that is out on the property. And amongst your reports, there were meetings with the building department, and a report was filed from a structural engineer saying, confirming that the slab could be used for such construction, as certain construction features were used at the time of building the building, and nephews will agree, I think will comply with the request. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that the commission may have.
Anyone have a question to Mr. Madam? Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for the applicant. Oh yes, if there are any objectors or concerned citizens to this case. I'll entertain a motion for the applicant.
Make a motion, case number 6226-HMV, approving a map amendment from A1 to R1.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Second.
Make a motion, case 6226-HMV, approving a map amendment from A1 to R1.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Second.
Make a motion, case 6226-HMV, approving a map amendment from A1 to R1.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Second.
Make a motion, case 6226-HMV, approving a map amendment from A1 to R1.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. You're welcome, sir.
Mike, I have something for you here.
The next case is case number 6247-SV2. Mrs. Smantana will give us the information.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. This zoning request takes place in DuPage Township. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for an outdoor storage yard, a variance for lot frontage from 80 feet to 60 feet, and a variance for fence height from four feet to six feet. The zoning requests are being made to address a violation, property has been in violation with the county since March of 2013. The violation has gone through the county's administrative adjudication process and through the circuit court. We have three photos of the property displayed for you. Picture in the upper left-hand corner is a photo looking south towards the subject property. Picture in the upper right-hand corner is looking southwest towards the property, and then the picture at the bottom is looking northeast on Frontage Road. The Land Use Department did receive other agency comments. Received comments from the Village of Bullingbrook, DuPage Township Supervisor, DuPage Township Assessor, and the Village of Romeo Ville. The Village of Bullingbrook does object to the special use permit. That objection is stated in both a letter from the mayor and through a resolution passed by the village board. Both those were in correspondence, were enclosed in the staff report for your review. The DuPage Township Supervisor submitted correspondence to the Land Use Department today. That supervisor on behalf of the DuPage Township Board of Trustees also objects to the special use permit. Now I'll distribute that letter now for you.
Thank you.
The DuPage Township Assessor had no objection to the proposed special use permit. The Village of Romeo Ville had no objection to the proposed special use permit. Now, the Village of Romeo Ville, while they state they had no objection, they did recommend some development characteristics to be employed to help mitigate any negative impacts on the property. We have an aerial property. The property is indicated by the red arrow. It is generally located just northeast of Veterans Parkway at I-55. And we have the surrounding zoning map. Again, the property is indicated by the red arrow. The property is more or less surrounded by the Village of Bullingbrook, which is identified in the pink shade. Staff has recommended approval of the special use permit for an outdoor storage yard with four conditions: approval of a variance for lot frontage from 80 feet to 60 feet, and approval of a variance for fence height from four feet to six feet. There's a couple important facts to keep in mind regarding this special use permit. Right now, as the property exists, it would not qualify as an outdoor storage yard. The current condition of the property would be defined as a junk and salvage yard. So in order for the property to comply with the request of special use permit, staff has added several conditions to the special use permit that would require the owner and applicant to remove any inoperable vehicles and to obtain licenses for all other vehicles stored on the property. That would include the trailers that are parked on the property. In addition to removal of inoperable vehicles and licensing of all other vehicles, there is a condition that will require screening. Property is owned I-2. It's located in an industrial corridor along I-55. There is other outdoor stores taking place within that industrial corridor. There are several trucking operations. There's also warehouses. So staff's professional opinion that if the property is approved and screened, it will not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. And the Appicent has stated that he has used the property as it exists now for at least 26 years. That's been one of the Appicent's arguments since he was cited in 2013, was that this use should be grandfathered. It's been in existence for 26 years. The grandfathering is never proven, nor would the use be considered grandfathered due to an establish in 1989. The two variances bring into compliance existing conditions: property is deficient in lot frontage. That variance for lot frontage will bring that property's frontage into compliance, and then the variance for fence height will allow for a six-foot fence within the front yard setback. The benefit to that variance is, of course, additional screening. A six-foot fence will provide more screening than a four-foot fence along Frontage Road. And that concludes staff's analysis.
This came with a court order to amend.
Well, the case was considered in the circuit court, and there was a court order that required that the property be brought into compliance. So to bring the property into compliance, you either clean up the existing use and abandon that use, or you pursue zoning approval to allow for the use to continue.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have a question, Mr. Madam?
You're welcome.
With Michael Martin, Don Martin Miller, the attorney.
Good evening. I am Mike Martin, Don Martin Miller. I'm at 15 West Jefferson, Joliet. And I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Henry James, who's sitting up there, and he's also known as Ed James. He used to own Ed James Chevrolet in Bullingbrook, Illinois. And basically, believe it or not, this is where he stores his antique car parts. He's an antique car collector, and he's been doing this on the property for 26 years. We purchased the property in 1979, and we zoned it in 1979, and it was zoned at I-2. And at that time, outdoor storage was a permitted use in the I-2 district. Additionally, regarding the variances, we did not need 80-foot frontage. The lot has always only had 60 feet of frontage on Frontage Road, and so we did not create that situation. That's just the way the property exists. It's a three-acre property, about one acre of it is used for storage. It's divided by a natural gas pipeline, which separates the property into a one-acre parcel and approximately two-acre parcel. If I may just take a moment, I just want to hand out some photos that I gave a copy to Mr. Smith here.
that it's segregated into the one-acre and the two-acre parcel. And when you look in that area where the yellow highlighted is contained, you can see that most of the storage is along the west property line of what we would call the northerly parcel, and then it narrows to where the frontage is along I-55 or the Frontage Road. But I also want to draw your attention to the fact, if you look at that photo, that the Frontage Road is a right-in, right-out only, and that the Frontage Road basically only serves three properties. The property that's next to us to the west, which is a truck terminal which stores semis outside, as you can see in the aerial photo, and there's also another truck terminal that stores semis outside. Neither of those properties or fences are screened. Immediately to the east of us is the old farmhouse, which my client also owns, so it's our property. If you look at the second photo, exhibit two, this is a view of the Frontage Road, which goes from our property over to Veterans Parkway. The Frontage Road is in deplorable condition. It is full of potholes. It's very, very difficult to navigate a car. And this is actually a photo of our neighbor's property without any fencing or screening. The trucks burnt on the property. And the next photo following that, exhibit three, is a photo from our property looking towards the east, which shows the old farmhouse that we own. And you can also see at the very end of that road is a roadblock. The road is sealed off, so it really doesn't serve any other properties. Because the frontage is an issue, I give you a photo, exhibit four, showing the 60 feet of frontage. We do have a screened fence. We put slats in the fencing. The fence has been on the property since 1989. When we constructed the fence, and that goes to the second variance, the ordinance required a six-foot fence, not a four. And the ordinance in 79 also required a six-foot fence. So we built a six-foot fence. We didn't put the screening slats in it. But if you were going along I-55 on the other side of Frontage Road, you would have maybe, you know, a second at most to view this slat fence, because you're going 65 miles an hour, and you're coming either underneath the overpass of Veterans Parkway. So right now, if you get a look at it, if you look at exhibit five, which is just a Google map, our property is pretty much isolated from everybody. There's no public, there's no traffic that goes by. The only traffic is the truck terminal that's next to us that has semis parked overnight. I think they go to the terminals down here, to the Center Point Properties, but it's just kind of like an overnight parking. And then the same thing with the other Google Earths I've given you. You can see our property is in here, and we're completely surrounded by industrial. The whole area is nothing but industrial. And again, another one, just highlighting the industrial nature of it. So basically, we were zoned in 1979. We didn't start the outdoor storage on the property in 1989 when we got a permit from DOT to access the Frontage Road. And the two variances are not really self-created hardships. They were actually, the property exists as it exists of record. But if you were going along I-55, on the other side of frontage road, you would have maybe, you know, a second at most to view this slat fence, because you're going 65 miles an hour and coming either underneath the overpass of Veterans Parkway. So, right now, if you get a look at it, if you look at Exhibit 5, which is just a Google map, our property is pretty much isolated from everybody. There's no public. There's no traffic that goes by. The only traffic is the truck terminal that's next to us that has semis parked overnight. I think they go to the terminals down here or to the Center Point properties, but it's just kind of like an overnight parking. And then, the same thing with the other Google Earths I've given you. You can see our property is in here, and we're completely surrounded by industrial. The whole area is nothing but industrial. And again, another one, just highlighting the industrial nature of it. So, basically, we were zoned in 1979. We didn't start the outdoor storage on the property in 1989, when we got a permit from DOT to access the frontage road. And the two variances are not really self-created hardships. They were actually, the frontage, the property exists as it exists of record, and the fence height was something that was in compliance with the ordinance at the time that we put the fence up. I'll stop at this point and ask if there are any questions. And my client agrees with all the conditions. One of the things that we did when we went to court, he felt that he should have been grandfathered. We lost that case, so we're here trying to comply. You know, but at this point, that will require us to license all the trailers and prove that the cars that we have on it are operable. We're willing to go through all that and the inspection. There were some debris piles at the time the complaint was brought. We've cleaned up the debris piles to kind of be able to inspect. So, we're willing to go along with any of the conditions. We have not objected to any of them. Thank you very much.
What is the total acreage that is currently occupied?
It's a little over three. It's like 3.02 of this property. The farmhouse is another couple acres to that. We're not really, we're kind of like, we're in Bolingbrook's planning area, but, you know, we can't be forced next because of the natural gas pipeline and, you know, that so, and the I-55. So, we're just kind of like an island of ourselves. We've been there for 26 years until the complaints were brought, which basically, I don't think is anything secret. We're brought by the Village of Bolingbrook against us. We haven't, you know, we've been there using it. There's hardly any traffic. It's just Ms. James, who's 83 years old, who has his car parts there.
Now, the car parts are all outside?
No, they're in the trailers. They're in the trailers.
Now, when you're talking antiques, what are we talking about?
Well, you could park, what year? The one antique car's usually 25 years or older. The vehicles on the property, there's six vehicles on the property. I think there's three Suburbans and three Chevy pickup trucks. So, when the county comes out to inspect, we'll have to prove that they're operable or we'll have to remove them. The trailers, one of the, see, the new ordinance has requirements that weren't required back then. We'll have to have licenses on all the trailers. If we don't have a license on the trailer, the trailer's going to have to be removed.
And where does your client reside?
Oh, my client resides in Ensvale.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any concerns, citizens, or objections to this case? Do you have anything to say over there? Just trying to test her words. Please come up.
I'm Nicole Knapp. I'm a zoning administrator with the Village of Bolingbrook. As I understand, you have the letter of objection from the mayor's office, including the formal resolution from the village board of trustees in opposition of the outdoor storage yard, including the associated variances to do with the lot within the fence height. I'm here this evening to expand further upon that with more detail. As the attorney said, the subject site is completely surrounded by the Village of Bolingbrook. And we believe in this situation, the subject site should be annexed into the Village of Bolingbrook and not left in the county jurisdiction, as we feel it's better from an enforcement standpoint to monitor the property. Approving the special use for an outdoor storage yard impacts the village in such a way that we recently approved an 11-acre development, which is located southwest of the subject site, and it's at the hard corner of Crossroads Parkway and Veterans Parkway, for 180,000 square foot Class A office distribution building that is about to break ground in the next month or two. And the existence of this subject site in its current condition or as a storage yard makes it very difficult to market and lease this Class A industrial distribution building. Additionally, the Village of Bolingbrook recently annexed the property that the applicant's attorney alluded to. We rezoned it. It's located immediately west and south of the subject site. It's eight acres in size. And as you see today, when we annexed it, we rezoned it to I-1 and gave them a special use permit to allow outdoor truck parking. It's known as Chicago truck parking, which actually ended up cleaning up the site of how it appeared when it was in county jurisdiction. And we put a sunset clause on that, so that within the hopes of the near future, the developer who is developing the 11-acre site to the south plans to then purchase the property that has Chicago truck parking and continue the business park. Along with that, and at that time, our plan as the Village of Bolingbrook is to vacate frontage road. Hence why we are not maintaining it. It put a common roadway that circulates between the 11-acre development that I just referred to and the Chicago truck parking lot, and takes access off of Veterans Parkway, so there will be no more access to frontage road. Unlike the other letter of support from DuPage Township Assessor, not the supervisor, the Village of Bolingbrook feels the site is very visible from I-55 and from southbound Veterans Parkway, and screening is key in a special use if it is approved. This property is not isolated and is not barely visible. It's very visible. Approving the special use appears to be for the whole acre site, the whole three-acre site. Right now, as you see it, the outdoor storage sits north of the pipeline only. And as, if you approve the special use permit, it reads like it's for the entire three-acre parcel. What limits the applicant from increasing the outdoor storage yard? All of a sudden, you will have three football fields of outdoor storage of what he may call antiques, but at the end of the day, it's junk in a storage yard. The vegetation has not, excuse me, I've printed some areas. I don't know if it's appropriate to pass them to the dais now. This is a snapshot of the property over the last 21 years, and how originally, it appeared like the applicant was storing on about one acre of the site. It's grown over the years. And if you look closely, there are many, many, many trailers on here that have not moved in the 21 years. In fact, the vegetation has grown over top of that. There are 10 copies of the same. The staff report and the agreement ordinance is not specific to what actually is classified as outdoor storage, meaning staff's recommendation or ordinance does not state that the approval would be for a special use of outdoor storage of specifically trucks and trailers. As such, the possibility of what can be stored in the outdoor storage yard are endless unless it's specifically defined as a condition of the special use permit. I have questions for staff or the board. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask them now, meaning are there going to be conditions of approval for what can be stored in the storage yard?
I can answer that right now. Staff has not conditioned special use permits to limit the storage in the storage yard as the answer for now.
So, if it's not limited, it could be pallets of junk?
Sure.
Okay. If the special use is approved, would there be bi-yearly or yearly inspections to make sure that the vehicles are operable and licensed?
When special use permits are approved by the county board, and there are conditions dependent to that special use permit, the county's local enforcement staff does do an inspection within one year of county board approval to ensure that the special use permit was lawfully established. At that time, that inspection would confirm that screening is in place, that all inoperable vehicles have been removed from the property, and that all remaining vehicles are licensed. From that point forward, we are complaint-based, and we would not go back out to the property to perform an inspection unless a complaint was submitted.
Thank you. With respects to the increase in fence height, the Village of Bolingbrook feels the screening is very important. When, considering conditions of approval associated with outdoor storage in the Village of Bolingbrook, we actually require that the screening be a minimum of eight feet in height, and that the storage not be allowed to exceed the fence or wall. And if in the case that you do have storage on site that exceeds the eight-foot wall, you then have to plant landscape material that in front of the fence or on either side of the fence or wall that then matches the height of the storage. So, in no case do you have storage that is located higher than the wall.
That's Bolingbrook, too.
Correct. These are things that we would like you to consider.
My recommendation to the Village of Bolingbrook would be to submit these items in writing as recommended conditions on behalf of the Village of Bolingbrook. That way, staff and land use development committee and county board could consider those additional conditions. Going through them verbally tonight had to do a lot of good. We would need them in writing so we can pass those conditions out to future committees for consideration.
I do agree, because we are concerned with the quality of the county road. So, what Bolingbrook feels are, it doesn't affect us. I mean, not trying to be silly with that, maybe, to any community within the county, but our job here is to go into the road or something like that.
And I respect that, but keep in mind that eventually, one day, this property would be in our jurisdiction, and then we have to grandfather and accept the site as is.
Are you within a mile and a half?
We're adjacent next door.
And you put a book legal objection.
You can only do a legal objection when there's a math amendment. And again, my only recommendation is I would ask the village to put in writing all of their recommended conditions. That way, staff and the land use department can analyze those conditions and recommend to the land use development committee or county board that they vote to adopt those recommended conditions from Bolingbrook.
Would you ask the county to pay?
No. I'm asking the Village of Bolingbrook to submit their recommended conditions in writing, so that those conditions can be considered by the county.
This is the steps going, county board, Mike, or what is it?
This will have to go to the county board. It's supposed to be two additional variances.
So, what you're saying, staff is saying, is if you can get your objections together and from the staff, something presented, or a big one next week, or down each community.
If the variances are conclusion tonight, how does that affect if the board approves a six-foot fence, and then the land use committee or the county board would like it?
The variance is approved tonight, we'll offer that six-foot fence to remain within the front yard setback. If the variance was denied, the applicant would either have to replace that fence with a four-foot fence or cut the existing fence down to two or four feet. I'm not sure if Bolingbrook is opposed to a six-foot fence along the roadway. High position would be with increased screening?
We actually don't allow chain link fences within dedicated front yards. So, the white slats in the chain link fence with the barbed wire are very unsightly.
If you're opposed to chain link fencing, again, in your letter that goes through the conditions that Bolingbrook would like to see imposed as part of the special use permit, you could propose a condition that requires removing that chain link fence and replacing it with a more stately, pleasing solid fence.
And if the county wanted to make that recommendation, would the applicant have to ask for a variance then to go through this whole public hearing process again to go from six feet to eight feet? Or can the county board?
If you were to construct an eight-foot fence in the front yard setback, you would need a new variance.
In closing, the Village of Bolingbrook believes that staff's recommendation and the current amendment ordinance are contradictory to the applicant's intentions. The applicant's application states that he wishes to store antique auto parts and trailers and antique autos on-site. If something is an antique and deemed to have any significant value, the antique would be stored in a secured, climate-controlled building, and not on raw land or in the back of a semi-trailer, which is rusted beyond use. The property is nothing more than a junkyard, and aspects of the special use conditions that are approved are contrary to what would be allowed within the jurisdiction of the Village of Bolingbrook. And given the property may be in our jurisdiction in the near future, I ask that you deny the request for the special use this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Kyle.
You have one of your cards. I do. Thank you.
Is there any questions? Or anybody?
Nope.
And I think you've got enough for staff and the public.
Thank you.
Is there any other concern, citizen, or objection to this case?
I had him raise his hand to be sworn in when you swore in. You're Edward James? Okay, Edward James.
I'm Edward James.
All right. And you owned Edward James Chevrolet in Bolingbrook?
I own Ed James Chevrolet in Bolingbrook, frankly.
And you use this property to store car parts?
Yes.
Okay. And how long have you been doing it?
Since 1989.
Okay. And inside those trailers are your antique car parts?
Cars, right.
Okay. And you've cleaned up the property since Bolingbrook made this complaint?
Yes.
All right. And you got rid of the debris piles?
Yes.
And you put the slats in the fence and screened it?
Yes, I screened the property.
Okay. That's all I have. Wanted to make sure that you understood that that's what we're using it for. Quite simply, since the conditions, I won't address any that she imposed, you know, I mean, if when we get to land use, if that's an issue, we're not, we have no plans to explain, so we'll fit ourselves within the footprint we have now. So, we can agree to that of land use. When she puts the others in writing, I guess I'll deal with that at the land use committee. Are there any questions that you have that I can answer? Or Mr. James can answer? Okay.
Yeah. I have a question. What about the point that Nicole mentioned relative to the pipeline and the special use permit? Pipeline dividing the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the special use permit?
Well, it's one lot of record, okay? So, that's why the legal description, even though the natural gas pipeline splits it into two, we have to get a permit from the pipeline if we wanted to cross over the pipeline and use that other acre. But we have no intention of doing that. So, we have to deal with the legal description as it is. If the land use wants to impose a condition that we have to stay within the footprint of the existing fence, we'll agree to that. So, I think...
You have not, you have utilized setting the property on the other side of the...
No, we've been in the same spot for 26 years. Yeah, it's been farmed, so...
Farmed out.
Yeah.
Hasn't.
Yeah. But there's no plan to expand. The fence has been there since 1989. Yeah.
I'd like to comment on that. That one acre is contiguous, even though it's on the other side of the pipeline and not contiguous to mine. It's contiguous to the semi-trailer people next door, which asked me to lease them that one acre and expand their semi-trailer storage.
Did you?
I haven't done it yet, because I'd wait to start this all. But it would take a special use permit for all of my property for them to pick up that one acre and add it to their Chicago truck storage lot. And that's the only thing that's contiguous to, like the lawyer said, and for me to get to it, I have to put a hundred feet of cement driveway across the pipeline to get to one acre, which is not economically feasible. So, it's been vacant all this time, it's still being farmed, and then also the other acre on the north side, which is two acres. I occupy one acre, and the rest of the other acre is being farmed as a additional acreage in the area. See, Commonwealth Edison is also on the other side of my property and joins it. That's 210 feet, approximately 11 acres. And there's seven acres of natural gas pipeline property. The farm that I own is two and a half acres, and my property, three acres. I am not a three-acre parcel as the mayor of Bolingbrook would like to indicate. I'm not a three-acre island. There's 25 acres that are not in Bolingbrook, and it's all adjacent to my property, and it's my property. So, we're all together there.
Mike, I want to ask staff a question. If we, what if we approved the special use, so we're doing what he's doing here, but denied the variance on the fence, so that they could come back and they, them deal with something that would be more aesthetically acceptable in Bolingbrook?
Well, if you were to deny the variance, and the condition was proposed by the Village of Bolingbrook and ultimately accepted by our county board, it required construction of the fence higher than four feet than the required front yard setback. Mr. James would have to refile a new variance for fence height and come back before this commission for approval. We couldn't simply ignore an ordinance provision because of the condition and the law that we construct a fence higher than four feet in front of the setback.
Either that, or we'd have to appeal it and get it, try to get everything in front of the county board at one time, and then we could deal with the county board. So, I mean, that's another alternative. I think it would force us to appeal if there was a denial. I think it would force us to appeal if there was a denial of the variance, which I don't want to be, you know, we just want to, full reasonable people want to come, pick up clients with the county board.
Well, I see these aerials and I see, you know, the trailers all, it's not just his, but you know, that's phenomenal, exactly, in that picture that I'm looking at. So I can understand what we're doing there and I feel like it's not a far stretch to have what we have in that neighborhood. But I do understand Boeing Burke's concern with these things of...
But we're the only ones fenced. The other people aren't fenced. They're all, they own everybody.
They don't have cars.
I mean...
They don't have...
Yeah, they do, they have cars to park in. Yeah, they have all the truck drivers parked, the truck drivers park all their vehicles in the terminal.
Yeah, well, those are vehicles that are on and off, on and off. And they're, they're older cars that are within the last ten years of modeling, whereas he has that...
We have six vehicles, three Suburbans and three Chevy pickup trucks.
I'm looking at a picture where there's significantly more than six at another point in time. And none of these conditions are asking that we keep it down to six vehicles or less or a hundred vehicles or less. So when you get the special use permit, then what?
Well, we're in a set footprint, there's only...
I understand Boeing Burke's concern with the aesthetics of the site.
Okay.
But I also believe that he's not a far stretch from what's going on in the town of Kansas City.
The property next door, the trucking has a six-foot high fence, fence infected. I have a common fence with them. I property a busner's. So the fence is on the property is actually their fence and mine continues around the other three sides. So, you know, you got semis parked there, a hundred fifty of them, and so you want to make my fence four feet? It's ridiculous. And I'd like to share something else with you. Boeing Burke is complaining about my property. This is a picture of the Joe Lasky property, which is now being developed, but for the last twenty years, this is how it's looked. No fence, no slats, and it looks worse than mine. Yet the mayor complains about my property and he does nothing until Joe Lasky finally sells his property and gets developed. But that's been going on as long as mine has. We bought all our property at the same time. Take a look at that.
Well, I see in the aerials, I have to say.
Mr. James? Mr. Chairman? Mr. James, how long have you ownership in Boeing Burke?
How long did you own Ed James Chevrolet? It was more than twenty-five years.
I've owned it since nineteen sixty-nine, the original in Lamont for nine years, and we moved it from Lamont to Boeing Burke in nineteen seventy-eight. And I retired in two thousand, it's still operating. It's now advantage Chevrolet is who it was sold out to when I retired. Retired in two thousand. I'd like to spend my golden years enjoying this property with my son working on antique cars. We don't work on the property, it's just a place to store the parts that we need, and we do work on the cars off-site.
Does anyone here have any more questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Here, Mr. James.
I want to take a motion, a special use permit, not for storage.
I will make the motion, case number six-two-two-seven dash SB two. Approval of a special use permit, ground course forty-two.
Second.
What conditions?
Yeah, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Brothers?
Yes.
Blagg versus Nahar Mitchell, yes. Peterson votes no. Steppen?
Yes.
White?
No.
Okay, special use permit.
Sorry, was Mr. Steppen the vote?
Yes.
He said yes. Okay, sign in the appropriate files. Yeah, we want to do your...
Second, one of the variances for coverage from fourteen to sixty-three.
I'll make a motion, case number six-two-two-seven dash SB two, for approval of the variance for lot coverage from fourteen to sixty-three.
Second.
Brothers?
Yes.
Blagg versus Nahar Mitchell?
Yes.
Peterson votes no. Steppen?
Yes.
White?
No.
That also fails. Next, it says variance for fence height from fourteen to sixty-three.
Case number six-two-two-seven dash SB two, for a motion for approval of the variance for fence height from fourteen to sixty-three.
Second.
Brothers?
Yes.
Blagg. Mitchell?
Yes.
Peterson votes no. Steppen?
Yes.
White?
No.
Girl.
Natalie, would you be kind enough to give us Mr.?
I'll be attached to that case.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks.
Next case is sixty-two thirty-four V. I'm sorry.
Ms. Nat, excuse me. On your card, I just want correct spelling of your name and your title.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin this next case, I believe we're going to start sixty-two thirty-four V, is that correct?
Yes.
It's come to my attention, Matt, who's in the state attorney's office, had a couple of questions with regards to notifications. I want to make sure that the applicant does comply fully with it. It's my understanding that the applicant was provided a list of addresses where notification was to be sent to. We don't have to return receipts on those, we only have, it's my understanding, according to staff, a printed receipt. It looked like a credit card payment that they were made. And also, we don't have payment made for the newspaper publication, even though publication occurred. So when the applicant steps up, I wanted to make sure that those, both of those were addressed fully with the case, at least today. Everybody was sworn in, I understand that, but when the applicant steps up, I'd like to have those questions posted or him, I'm not sure.
Will you swear though?
Sure, we can.
Yeah.
So we can address that when they step up. Thank you.
Would you like to do that?
We can do it now if you'd like. Is the applicant here?
Are the applicants here?
I know I'm taking this kind of out of order, but I wanted to make sure...
Well, I was going to reduce the case.
Okay, I just want to make sure we address it first. Downstone one-seven-zero-zero-four, South Heather Creek Drive.
I'm Jill Don, I'm at the same address.
And which one would be considered the applicant? Are you both the applicant? So you both were sworn in under oath?
Yeah, the beginning of that.
Okay. It's my understanding, I'm going to pose a few questions to you, whoever wants to answer. Matt, you provided a list of addresses where the mails were to be sent to, the certified mails, is that correct?
Yes.
And the information provided to staff today was a credit card payment receipt showing that...
We, I went to the post office, I filled out all the registered mail to the list of applicants I had, and we just hadn't gotten anything back from the post office.
Okay, so you did, you certified mail, what's the return receipt?
Yeah, I have some of my neighbors are there that may have received.
I understand.
Three of our, three of our neighbors are here.
Okay, so that's a yes, that those, they were sent out?
Yeah, yes.
So to make sure we comply with the county ordinance, could you provide those cards? Dan, would you like to plug tomorrow?
Yes.
Could you give those to us by tomorrow, the staff and land use?
Isn't the post, the post office is supposed to mail me those because the receipt is the only thing I got from the post office.
You don't have those yet?
No.
We have not received anything from the post office yet, from the certified mail we sent out.
And how long ago did you have to send that out?
From fourteen to fifteen, the date is on the receipt that I turned out.
All right, well, we'll verify those, but when you get those, could you turn those in?
Yeah, I'll be more than happy when they come. This is the first time I've done, is they come in the mail or something?
Okay. And then the other thing was regarding publication notes, the newspaper, it's my understanding that you guys published in a newspaper, is that right?
Yeah, and then they made me, if we didn't pay it, we had to write another check for a hundred and ten dollars and give it as a deposit so you guys could pay it because they made me write the check for six hundred dollars for the variance and then made me give another hundred dollar deposit.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't mean to laugh. You know what, all of this is understandable because when you do it once, maybe in a lifetime.
Right.
You know, it's difficult to understand, but you did get my, my letter notifying you of the meeting tonight, I think you might need to turn it back in. I told you so, I have it on the back of the, I got everything that you were supposed to bring tonight. But this is fine, we, you know, they made the allocation for a superior case.
Okay.
As far as that bond deposit check, it's only if for one reason or another you do that pay the publication.
Okay, we were not going to meet that impression.
We were not on the acting person.
It was, the impression that was given to my husband was that this was where the Don came in for that and then that would take care of that. That's why we did not go ahead and pay that because otherwise we would be able to do that and I am really happy to do so. I just was made aware of, no.
Okay, well, Stan is wonderful to work with, man. So they, under normal circumstances, he wouldn't hear your case tonight, so, but we appreciate that.
So we just want to ensure the pains we...
Appreciate that. Great Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing...
Those who don't know, Matt is our state attorney's representative, so...
The only thing that we're going to do is hold your bond deposit check.
Okay.
Until you pay the publication.
Okay.
All right?
That's fine with us.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to roll now.
Okay, that's it.
You're walking the ship right there, Mike.
Yeah. Everybody ready? Okay, zoning case six-two-three-four-v takes place in Plainfield Township. The applicants are requesting a variance for northeast side yard setback from ten feet to four feet. The purpose of this request is to construct an addition on the already existing detached garage. Displayed are three photos from the property and the surrounding area. The first photo is the existing residence. As you can see, the detached garage is located in the rear of the property. The other two photos show you the surrounding neighborhood along Heather Creek Drive. Displayed is an aerial view, highlighted in red is the subject property. As you can see, this area is dominated by single-family homes. It's just east of south of Lake Ashay Road. Here's the surrounding zoning. The neighborhood is zoned R two A. Also surrounding that neighborhood is A-one agricultural properties and to the west is Plainfield. The following is a flight of survey that the applicant has submitted. Highlighting red is the proposed addition to the detached garage. As you can see, it's going to be four feet away from the, from the property line. Staff is running on the approval of this variance for northeast side yard setback from ten feet to four feet. That concludes staff's analysis.
Is anyone have a question? No. Did you carry the camera at all or do you want?
No, that's not all of it.
Okay, thank you. It came to the way to the...
A bit, I didn't keep it away. Okay.
We'll wait just a few minutes.
Would you be kind enough to work with Jill on, you know, whatever? Jill, make sure she gets her card. Natalie, why am I, you're Jill. Yeah, you're Jill, okay. I need a cup of coffee. What, Michael?
Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask presenting objectors to ask zoning...
Are there any objectors or concerned citizens on this case?
Okay, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. We've got a lull right here waiting for another board member to get back. I'm looking, is this all the documents you have tonight?
I have the usual conversation.
Why don't they sell their, maybe cut out their whole thing then? All right.
Sorry?
Okay.
I'll make a motion, case six-two-three-four-v. Approval of a variance for northeast side yard setback from ten feet to four feet.
Second. All the voters who are not saying...
I am.
Aye?
You should vary it, guys. You're welcome. Okay, yeah, just follow through with her so that your file is completely missing. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
Next case is zone eight sixty-two thirty-five-v.
Zoning case sixty-two thirty-five-v takes place in Holmer Township. The applicant is requesting a variance for lot coverage from one hundred fifty feet to zero feet. The purpose of this request is to bring the property into compliance and to construct a single-family home on the property. The purpose of this request is to bring the property into compliance and to construct a single-family home on the property. Displayed are photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The property currently is not developed, as you can see from photo one. It is located on a private road known as Lindsay Lane, which includes single-family homes as well as empty lots to be developed. The subject property is highlighted in red on this aerial view. The general area of this subdivision is west of Gauder Road, south of Bruce Road, and north of Oak Avenue. The subject property is zoned R2, as well as the other single-family lots in the area. There's also A1 agricultural properties in green, as well as E2 residential properties. The following shows a surround condominium subdivision, the applicant's property is in red. These properties are not unlike many other parcels found throughout the county. It is basically a technicality that they do not have lot frontage, because they're on a private road. Our ordinance requires lot frontage on a public road, however, Lindsay Lane is providing access to a public road, as it's just west of Gauder. Staff recommends approval of a variance for lot frontage from one hundred fifty feet to zero feet. That concludes staff's analysis.
Are there any objectors or concerned citizens about this case? I'll make a motion, case number 6235-V. Approval of a variance for lot frontage from one hundred fifty feet to zero feet.
Second.
All that being considered, by saying aye.
Aye.
On your phone, say aye. Where are they, where's my case up?
I'm on the door.
Oh, okay. Here, she's sixty-two, because she's seven, she's three.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, this case takes place in Green Garden Township. The applicant's requesting a variance for accessory building area from three thousand square feet to six thousand two hundred eleven point four three square feet. Variance request is to allow for four thousand six hundred forty-four square foot addition to an existing detached garage. We have a photo of the existing single-family residence and detached garage. We have an aerial of the property, the property is indicated by the red arrow, this is just southwest of the intersection of Stager and Center Road. With surrounding zoning map, the yellow and orange is indicated residential zoning, green indicates A1 zoning, which is to the west, north, and south of the subject property. We have a plot of survey displayed for you. That plot of survey depicts the existing single-family residence that has an attached garage, an existing gazebo to the rear yard of the single-family residence, and then the existing detached garage. The red box is the proposed addition to that detached garage. Staff does recommend approval of variance for accessory area from three thousand square feet to six thousand two hundred eleven point four three square feet. The property is zoned E2 in E2 zoning district, and structure is utilized for animal confinement or exempt from maximum accessory building area. So if the individual who applied for this variance request was dishonest, told the department that he was going to utilize the addition for the stablement of horses, or the keeping of chickens, a variance would not be required. But because he's using this addition for personal storage, variance is required. Staff believes that that does create a unique circumstance and recommend approval.
Could there have been one chicken?
There could have been. There still might be.
Do you have any questions for this? Would the applicants care to come down?
Mr. Vice Chairman, Vice Commissioner Michael Hanson, attorney for the applicant. I think the staff reported by Mistress Montana states that all my clients as a contract purchaser of this home. We have a petition signed by all the property owners, neighboring and joining owners approving of the petition. He went personally, door to door to everyone. There was a person here earlier tonight, a nearby neighbor who had some questions concerning drainage, et cetera. Those reins are in the Zintac, is here tonight for the hearing in Helling, so he left the meeting. So I would recommend that the commission approve our petition. Yes, antique cars. Yeah, my client is here tonight, is a widower, just retired from his job, he's happy with antique cars, and that's the storage placement. Here is the very nice subdivision, very nice area, and I think this remedy will look very nice in the subdivision.
What year are the antique cars? What year are the antique cars?
They're mid-sixties, classic car.
They're not antiques. I want to see it after it's done and filled up.
We'll make sure.
Total steam, steam from our land use.
We're trying to get grilled by the barbecue.
Yeah, no, I'm not, they're these stimulations. Thank you, sir. I want to make a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Sony case 6237-V as in Victor. Variance for accessory building area from three thousand square feet to six thousand two hundred nine point four three square feet.
Second, all the things that you've been writing on the stand by.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vice Chairman Steppen, the applicant is requesting a temporary use permit to allow for a travel trailer to be utilized as a temporary residence while new single-family residence is constructed on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of this temporary use permit with two conditions. One condition sets forth that the travel trailer can no longer be used for residential purposes once the single-family resident, residence has received its certificate of occupancy. The second condition states that the temporary use permit must comply with the Will County Health Department for private sewage disposal, and that concludes staff's analysis.
Thank you, is there anyone have any questions to this? Would the caller of record like to come up?
I'm Mary Ann Wyman, sixteen twenty-six East Blair Way Road, and this is what I'm at, at the same address. We are seeking this temporary use permit, we are having our home demolished, and we would like to, we live on ten acres, and we are demolishing our home and building a new home right in the same footprint. And so because of that, we would like to be able to stay in our travel trailer. We have no problem with the two. Conditions on it, we've actually taken care of the Will County Health Department already. You have a letter that states that they are in agreement that we can use the travel trailer, and that we have our temporary septic tank already in place, so that's already taken care of. And we understand that as soon as the house goes up, I will be very happy to move back into it, as opposed to this twenty-five foot travel trailer. So I guarantee you it won't go one day longer without our certificate of occupancy, because it's small and the house is big, and I'd like to get there as quick as we possibly could. But since we live on ten acres, we would like to be able to stay right there on the property.
Is there any concerned citizens or objectors for this case? Do you want to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
This is Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve temporary use permit 2015-06. About two positions. Second.
You guys are screwing me up purpose.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I see this. Oh, here, I have got some papers. You can put this up in your cabinet. I wish that you could pitch a big fact. Some night, can't imagine what.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Steppen, this request takes place in Hommer Township. The applicant is requesting a temporary use permit to allow the sale of farm-grown produce, crops, and display of antique truck with signage. Property is located on Gauder Road. This temporary use permit was requested last year. Last year's temporary use permit was also approved by this commission. Land Use Department received no complaints while this temporary use permit was operated in 2014, so staff recommends approval of the permit this year. There are three conditions proposed. The first condition will require that the applicant comply with the building division requirements. The second condition establishes the days of operation, which is from May first through October thirty-first, 2015. And the third condition establishes the hours of operation for both weekdays and weekends, that concludes staff's analysis.
Is anyone have a question, Mike? Would the applicant care to come up for it?
You don't have to, if you want.
Thank you.
I don't want to, we're laughing, you want.
Okay, motion, who's going to fight for this?
What do you like? Make a motion, temporary use permit, number 2015.